I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Statement of adequate notice.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting was provided as follows. On September 26, 2013, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, Local Source, and the Clerk of the municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Colivas?
Here.
Mr. Strazella?
Here.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Here.
Mrs. Beviano?
Present.
Mr. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Hudak?
Here.
Mrs. Orman?
Here.
Mr. Scaldino?
Excuse?
Mr. Russell?
Here.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and regular meeting held September 24, 2013.
I make that motion second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Colivas?
Yes.
Mr. Strazella?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Abstain. Are there any correspondences?
There is none, Mr. President.
Comments from the public on agenda items only? Seeing none, moving into the superintendent's report. Dr. Robertozzi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, first, I'll give the HIB report, and then I'm going to ask the board to step down off the stage so we can honor our LHS tennis team, and I can do the Violence and Vandalism annual report. Our monthly HIB report contained 12 incidents. Four were validated as being an HIB incident, four were not, and four were undetermined. The consequences for the HIB incidents were warnings, out-of-school suspension, and Saturday school detention, respectively, and in all cases, the victims were counseled. At this time, I'd like to ask the board to have a seat. We've certainly been here before to honor the basketball team, to honor the football team, to honor other sports, but I am very proud tonight to honor the LHS girls tennis team. How about that girls tennis team, everybody? We have certificates that will be presented to all. At this time, I'd like to invite Principal Mrs. Modrak and the girls tennis coach, Barbara Collaessa, up to the podium to announce, and we'll give out the certificates, girls, and when you come up, we'll take a picture.
Tonight, we are proud to acknowledge and honor our girls varsity tennis team for their outstanding performance for this season. Not only are they amazing on the court, but off the court as well. They truly represent what Linden High School is all about. We couldn't be prouder of them. The team earned the Union County Valley Division Championship title, first time in tennis history. I believe so. They also came in fourth overall in the county in a pretty tough competition. This year, they advanced to the semifinal round of the STIC tournament, the first time in over 16 years. And it was also the first time Linden has beaten Westfield in over 30 years. So this team has really made their mark. But individually as well, we acknowledge three students who have accomplished the following. For the Union County, third place in for third singles, freshman Maya Jacobs. You guys could come on up. Union County champion, first place in second singles, Olivia Potzaberski. And my biggest feat is saying her name correctly. Oh, here we go. Okay. I don't think so. And, okay. And for our Union County champion for first singles, junior Joanna Zuluski. And this is the second time that she has accomplished this. The first time was her freshman year, and she took off a year to recoup from a shoulder injury and came back and still has a championship under her belt. And her first year as a freshman, she came in second place overall in the state, and this year, she has a very respectable third. So we are so proud of her for her accomplishments. And I'm going to call the rest of the team up as soon as I read the names of their certificates. I would like to call up Danika Desir. Nicole, oh, Nicole's not here. Missing a couple people? Hold on. Here we go. Rempey Kalia. Maya Jacobs, here we go. Dominica, is she here?
Dominica.
Dominica's not here. Sarah Fanus, come on up. Megan McDonald. We have one tennis player who is in Italy enjoying an Italian exchange. Here we go, and Joanna Zuluski. And this is the very amazing Linden High School's 2013 girls varsity tennis team.
This time, I'd like to give the annual Public Violence and Vandalism Report to Linden School District for 2012-13. This is a chart comparing the numbers since 2005, 2006. As you can see very clearly, our numbers have gone down this year to 132 incidents. The year prior, to 124 incidents. The major infractions in 2012-13. For us, they're hard to hear. Sure, sorry. Use the microphone. Yes, sir, I apologize. The numbers overall from the year prior have gone down from 124 incidents in the district. The major offenses dealing with weapons in the district last year, there were three knives, zero imitation guns, one BB gun, and five others. The other items consisted of a rock, cafeteria utensils, lighter fluid, and a barbecue You can smile. And here, we list the incidents by school. In yellow are the number of incidents that are characterized as harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Last year was the first year that the state of New Jersey required us to count these as violence and vandalism incidents. So you can see that in many instances, it raised our number. That completes my report. I'd like to open it to public comments. Seeing none, I'll ask the board to come back to the stage, and that will conclude my report.
Thank you, Dr. Robertozzi. Do we have an attorney's report?
Nothing.
Our regular standing reports, curriculum instruction, Mrs. Viviano?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are 34 items under curriculum and instruction for approval. Items 1 through 9 deal with approval of specialized programs for placement of classified students, determination of out-of-district placements, the approval of home instruction, the approval of payment for related services as per the child study team evaluations, and the acceptance of tuition funds for students. Item 10 approves the 2013-2014 winter team sports schedules. Item 11 deals with amendments of past agenda items. Item 12 approves curriculum writing. Item 13 deals with approval for various school activities and use of facilities. Item 14 approves district field trips. Item 15 approves training for district staff. Item 16 approves professional development activities. Item 17 grants permission to approve the Sunday coaching visits for elementary special education teachers. Item 18 grants permission for a high school teacher to conduct a research survey with Linden High School teachers for her master's program. Item 19 grants permission for various high school groups to take part in the City Hall Tree Lighting Ceremony on December 6, 2013. Item 20 grants permission for a special services staff member to conduct and gather information from a survey necessary for a report required by the New Jersey Department of Education. Item 21 appoints staff members to work with St. Mary and Elizabeth Academies by providing professional development funded through non-public Title I funds. Item 22 awards three credits of Modern Polish to two Linden High School students for the completion of coursework. Item 23 grants permission for a teacher to apply for a Hope Street Fellowship. Item 24 and 25 grant approval to pilot the SEAL of Biliteracy and approve the submission of the 2013 NCLB Final Expenditure Report. Item 26 grants permission for LHS German students to participate in the Goethe Institute German Video Testimonial Project. Item 27 approves the 2013-2014 annual tuition for the Union County Vocational Technical School Programs. Item 28 authorizes independent study programs at Linden High School. Item 29 accepts the superintendent's report on all acts of violence and vandalism in the Linden Public Schools during the 2012-2013 school year. Item 30 designates district personnel as professional development presenters on November 5, 2013. Items 31 and 32 proclaim that a Week of Respect and School Violence Awareness Week be recognized during the month of October in the Linden Public Schools. Item 33 approves the resolution proclaiming the week of November 18 through November 22 as American Education Week to be celebrated in all Linden Public Schools. And item 34 recognizes October as National Principals Month. Mr. President, I move curriculum and instruction, items 1 through 34, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Colivas?
Yes, on everything except item 15 that pertains to Diane and Christopher Colivas, I abstain.
Mr. Strazella?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Viviano. Management and Operations Report, Mrs. Hudak.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Management and Operations Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following 28 motions to the Board of Education for approval. Number 1, whereas John T. Gregorio during his lifetime served as a friend and advocate of the students and staff of the Linden Public Schools, and whereas John T. Gregorio, as former mayor of the City of Linden, represented the citizens with distinguished and outstanding service, whereas John T. Gregorio throughout all of his endeavors demonstrated unwavering commitment to improving the quality of life for the citizenry of Linden, be it resolved that the Superintendent and the Board of Education of the City of Linden hereby give public expression of their feelings for the loss in the passing of John T. Gregorio on October 23, 2013, and do tender to the members of his family their heartfelt sympathy and condolence in his time of bereavement and sorrow. Number 2 is the following retirements to be accepted with regret. Dr. Robertozzi?
Thank you, Mrs. Hudak. I had the opportunity to work with both of these employees, Mrs. Fran Ocardo and Mrs. Mary Ann Rosevack. Mrs. Ocardo has been a fixture in the Linden High School Guidance Office for as long as I can remember, and prior to that. She will be missed by the many who visit her every day, and her knowledge, it will be hard to replace what she has brought to that office. Mary Ann Rosevack, we worked together at Linden High School. She was a special education teacher and is now retiring as an LDTC. She has done wonders for many children in this district, and for those who've had the opportunity to know her, they're better off for knowing her. We wish her the best in her retirement. On behalf of the board, we wish both of them the best in their retirement.
Thank you, Dr. Robertozzi. Number 3 is to amend board action on past management operation reports as listed. Number 4 is to accept the resignation of the following staff. Number 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 25, 26, 27, and 28 are all appointments. Number 18 is to approve the following leave of absences that are listed. Number 19 is to approve the settlement agreement and release for the employee number listed, and the copy is on file with the Board Secretary. Number 20 is to authorize a payment of an estate. 21 is to authorize the collection and donation of sick days. Number 22 is to authorize the superintendent to sign the 2013-14 Memorandum of Agreement between Education and Law Enforcement Officials. Number 23 is to approve the transfer of staff. Number 24 is to retroactively approve the transfer of the following staff listed. And, Mr. President, I move items 1 through 28, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Sorry. Received a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Colivas?
Yes.
Mr. Strazella?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Hudak. Support Operations, Mr. Tapaleski.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Support Operations Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, presents the following 28 finance motions and 12 facilities motions to the Board of Education for approval. Items 1 through 6 are regular board business dealing with the acceptance of the Business Administrator Board Secretary's certifications as of September 30, 2013. Board Secretary's report for the month of September. Financial reports, authorizations for payments of salaries and supplemental payroll for October 2013, draw warrants in the amount specified in favor of person's name, and a list of transfers and adjustments for the month of September 2013. Item 7 is to accept the Treasury Report for the month of September 2013. Item 8 is a student activities report for the month of September 2013. Item 9 is to amend action on passport operations report finance from January 29, 2013. So I believe it's a change of the amount of money. Items 10 through 16 to accept funds in the amount of $164,000 from Union County Consortium for the 2013-14 year for Adult Basic Skills Grant, $20,000 from the Confucius Institute, Rutgers University, for use with the Confucius Classroom Program at Linden High School, $5,000 from Infineum USA in support of teacher training at Hawke Rising Environmental Site, $500 from Infineum USA in support of the ROTC Scholarship Fund, $500 from ExxonMobil Foundation Volunteer Grant Matching Gift Program for the benefit of School 9, the Target Take-Charge of Education Program for various schools listed, $20 from the State of New Jersey for the Probation Administration representing student restitution. Item 17 through 19 are to accept a donation of miscellaneous garden supplies from Home Depot of Linden for the Hurricane Sandy Remembrance Ceremony that occurred today, assorted school supplies from Verizon Cranford Office, Tony Bowen's School 5 Parent for the School 5 Students, and a King Alto Saxophone from Donna Senjzen, I think. Items 20 through 25 approve the payment in the amount of $11,210 to Brown &amp; Brown Insurance Florham Park for an increase in electronic data processing limit, $2,420 to Timothy A. Hundley, arbitrator/mediator Kingston, New Jersey, in the matter of PERC doc number AR 2013-538, an increase in student transportation bid threshold to $18,300 pursuant to NJSA 18A 39-3 effective July 1, a contract with the Monmouth Ocean Educational Services Commission for transportation to Ocean Regional School, Brunza Bus Company, Wallway, New Jersey, for the special ed transportation of PK for a period from September 4 through October 11, 2013, at the rate of $262.24 per day, the total of $7,080.48. Special education student transportation services for the school year for PK Development Learning Center, Warren, New Jersey, commencing November 11, as per quote "received." Item 26 was accept bids listed, A, for student transportation services. The opening bid was Tuesday, September 3, and B, athletic equipment for winter sports. The bid was opened October 3. Item 27 is to declare the following as surplus equipment obsolete or unusable to be disposed of in accordance with district policy. Item 28 is to approve the following resolution for submission of the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan and Annual Maintenance Budget Amount Worksheet in compliance with Department of Education requirements. Facilities, item 1 is to retroactively approve the use of facilities at no charges requested by Mr. Picaro, Principal of Soul Middle School. Items 2 through 11 are for use of facilities at no charges requested by Ms. Skokosa, Vice Principal, Program Director, and Mrs. Greco, Guidance Counselor at Soul Middle School, Mr. Cataline, Principal of School 4, Ms. White Bryant for Principal of School 5, and L. Will, our PTA president, Ms. Perkins, Principal of School 6, Ms. Birch, Mrs. Birch, President of the School 9 PTA, R. Gamolka, Coach Linden G-Force Reach Program, T. Rembisch, CYO Athletic Director at St. John's Athletic Association, P. Solidana, Field Coordinator of Linden Youth Soccer Association, N. King, Chairman Elizabeth Lindon Elks. The last two are pending payments for outstanding rental fees. Item 12 is the use of facilities at a rental fee and service charge as requested by S. Serlin, Location Manager of Tools of North America. Mr. President, if there are no questions or further discussions, I move items 1 through 28 of finance and 1 through 12 of facilities for approval, and respectfully seek a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Colivas?
Yes.
Mr. Strazella?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Tapaleski. Planning and Policy, Mrs. Orman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning and Policy Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent, submits six policies for second reading to incorporate new features required by code and law and to elaborate on local district policies. For second reading, we have Policy 4112 certification. It added a section titled District Reporting Requirements. 4131 and 4131.1, Staff Development and Service Education Visitation Conferences. This policy was overhauled for compliance with the significant changes to NJAC 6A:9-15.1, which states that teachers are required to complete a minimum of 20 hours of training annually. Policy 5131.6, Drugs, Alcohol, Tobacco, Substance Abuse. This policy was revised to reflect change to student assistant counselors and updated regulations supporting the policy to include in-house testing. 6142.10, Internet Safety and Technology, added a section on school furnished electronic devices. 6171.3, Academically at Risk and Title I is simply a title change. 9111, Qualifications and Requirement of Board Members, is a new policy with important information for compliance with requirements for all board members to undergo criminal background checks. Mr. President, I moved items 1 and 2, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Colivas?
Yes.
Mr. Strazella?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Orman. Report to Special Committee, State Delegate, Mr. Tapaleski.
There'll be a delegate assembly in the middle of November, which I have already registered for. Nothing pressing at that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Tapaleski. County Delegate, Mrs. Viviano.
No report.
I have a report, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Tapaleski.
I did attend the county meeting. It was held in South Brunswick on October 2 to explore legislative initiatives. Two Assemblymen, Mr. Pendra, I'm going to kill his last name, from the 7th, Chivkula from the 17th Legislative District, and Assemblyman Pat Dyman from the 18th Legislative District. Mr. Dyman is the Chair of the Assembly Education Committee. Discussed the Assembly and the legislature's actions upcoming on education. The two main things that they discussed was, Mr. Dyman was very big on changing the way charter schools are licensed. He wants them to be licensed by a vote of the town, and if the town doesn't want a charter school, they shouldn't have one. That's his belief. Also, the charter schools that already exist need to be monitored better for their effectiveness, and also, they're accepting the diversity of the community so that they can't cherry-pick students, that their enrollment must reflect enrollment of the town. The second one deals with, plenty of other ones dealt with balancing temperatures in the buildings, having regulations on conducting a business in the school day if it gets too hot or too cold in the rooms. The next meeting will be November 13 at Garwood Lincoln School in Garwood. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tapaleski. Education Service Commission, Mrs. Orman.
No report.
Thank you. The CAP program, Mr. Tapaleski.
No report.
Excuse me. EST, Mrs. Viviano.
No report.
EST for Students in Special Education, Mr. Tapaleski.
Yeah, two things. On October 18, I met with 25 students from all the grades. On October 18, I met with 25 students from all the grades here at the high school. We discussed a number of topics, got to know each other. They... The topics were very diverse, going from an early-out program that we used to have. They talked about the public library cutting back hours, possibly getting another athletic team, a boys volleyball team, and a senior fun day, they talked about. That was one of the topics they brought up. So I researched a number of these things. I already have scheduled meetings for November and December, so I will be having reports at those meetings. As far as the special ed, meeting was held on October 3, I believe. It was conducted... Mrs. Hudak was there with me. It was conducted by Chris Colivas and Michelle Altabelli, and it was an overflow crowd. We had a hunt for chairs, and it had to do with understanding IEPs, how to read them, and what they meant from the early grade levels through high school. That concludes that report.
Great, thank you very much. Any unfinished business? Any board member comments or new business? Mrs. Hudak?
Thank you, Mr. Russell. I just wanted to congratulate our staff. Last week I was out. I attended Italian night at School Number 4, and also, I went to the spooky horror night at School Number 2. Both evenings were absolutely phenomenal. Italian night, you could go all throughout the gym at School 4 and get all kinds of samples of food, but what was really very special was our staff. There were supervisors, coaches, all out there participating, serving food. Our teachers came back, our paraprofessionals came back. They all were there to make a successful night, and I personally, as a board member, was very proud of them. Friday night, I went to School 2. Couldn't ask for a better night. I didn't get to see all the displays because my granddaughter was kind of scared at some of it because it was a little too spooky for her, but it was packed, and again, the staff from School 2 all worked together. They were all there to make a successful night for all those kids, and I'd like to congratulate everyone that does do that. There are other events that are coming, going on this week, too, throughout the district for Halloween, and our staff always makes it special for our kids, so I would like to thank them for all that they do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Orman?
Yes. First, I'd just like to, once again, just extend my congratulations to the girls' tennis team on their outstanding achievements this year. I'm very proud of them. Go, girls! And also, I wanted to mention something that's going on right in our very city of Linden for the children who are on the autistic spectrum. We have a wonderful bowling league for the children, ranging from ages 5 straight through 21. Not just our students from the city of Linden, but we've opened it up to children throughout the county, but the great majority of them are from Linden, so I'd like to extend the invitation to our Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, Business Administrator, and our board members to come down to Linden Lanes one Saturday afternoon at 12 o'clock and see our children bowling, learning to cheer each other on, and experiencing parents who struggle with their children, being able to relax and not be prejudged when our children have some of the behavioral issues that they have a tendency to do. And last but not least, I'd like to give a special thank you to all of the principals and administrators in all of our schools who really took heart this month for Anti-Bullying Month. A lot of our teachers and staff went out of their way to incorporate programs, assemblies, focus groups, conversations, letting children know exactly what bullying is. It's not just pushing another kid around, it's not just, you know, saying derogatory things, but it's also taking advantage of a child who may have special needs or who just, you know, doesn't know better. So a lot of the schools did incorporate programs this month, and it's difficult when you're trying to run a school with 400, 500, 600 kids, trying to make sure that you teach all of them, so I want to thank them for their efforts and just tell them to continue the good work. Constant repeating about what bullying is all about eventually will pay off, and I'm looking forward to one day our schools not having to worry about such things as that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Orman. Anyone else?
Mr. Russell?
Mr. Topaleski?
Yeah, I have to report. I attended a school board's workshop, the second school board's workshop on negotiations. Dr. Robitose and Mrs. Dorni were also in attendance, and it talked about the face-to-face strategies. There is a third workshop that will be coming up, I believe, in February on developing salary guides. That concludes that.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, public... This is now the portion for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.